Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners is called to order. We're going to begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for Please stand for the pledge.
...............................................................
Nicole, do we have anyone joining us? Do you have help on here?
We do. I believe that is Helen Schmidt. And it's Star Sager.
Good morning.
Thank you. She's caught onto Zoom quickly, more quickly than I have. Is there anyone else joining us remotely today? Not hearing anyone else, sir. That is wrong.
Okay. Thank you. There is not, you can see under Item 5, excuse me, the Schedule of Upcoming Meetings, under Item 6, there was not, there is not an executive session announcement. We didn't have an executive session. So we'll proceed to Item 7. Commissioners receive drafts of the August 22 and 24 board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
Commissioner Webster will make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. They are approved, and we'll open the meeting at this time to any public comment. Okay. I'm hearing none. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Webster?
I just hope everyone had a great Labor Day. Nothing important to announce today. Thanks, though.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
I have nothing.
Nor do I, so we'll move to the consent agenda and ask Nicole to lead us through that.
Thank you. For your consideration today, the consent agenda is Resolution Number 423. It's the payment of four warrant lists as outlined in Item A, the ratification of four warrant lists as outlined in Item B, its budget transfers in Item C, its changes to the industrial authority and general authorities as outlined on the agenda. That would be for the resignation of Rex Metz, I'm sorry, effective December 10, 2022, and Bruno De Gaulle Jr., effective August 31, 2023, and for the appointments of Ann Memso filling the unexpired term of Mr. Metz and Bruno De Gaulle filling the unexpired term of Mr. De Gaulle, as outlined on your agenda. Then we have employment's resignations and status changes is outlined in Item E, F, and G, respectively.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Webster will make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All of them in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I am an aye, but I would like to abstain from D because I did not receive full information on all the available people before we voted.
The consent agenda is approved, with the abstention as noted. We'll move on to Item 11. Staff reports in special business. We have Carol Hartman here from Southern Allegheny Service Management Group this morning. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, everybody. We're asking for approval of the 2021 Early Intervention Income and Expense Report. There was a change to the revenues from the state after the year was closed, so it necessitated a revision.
Revision was minor?
Very minor. It was $23,000.
Which may not seem minor to many people, but given what your budget is, it's minor.
It was minor.
Are there any questions for Carol? Move out to Thursday's Business Agenda then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 200, that, I believe Tricia Marcino is going to take. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here requesting approval of eight fiscal year 2324 Mental Health Student Assistance Programs SAP letters of agreement between the County of Blair, Department of Social Services, UPMC Western Behavioral Health of the Alleghenies, and the school districts listed on the agenda for the period of July 1, '23 through June 30, '24.
And this includes all county school districts and is an annual, an annual agreement that we approve. Are there any questions for Tricia on this? We'll move out to Thursday's Business Agenda as well. Thank you, Tricia. And Item 3, our Community Development's Grant Coordinator, Trina Elwood. Good morning, Trina.
Good morning. We're requesting approval for Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Urb to sign the fiscal year '22 Community Development Grant, the E contract between the County of Blair and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The resolution also is requesting authorization for Tricia Marcino, the County Social Services Director, to serve as the delegate signing authority to submit any financial invoice during the contract period.
Questions for Trina? We'll take that to Thursday's Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. Item B for children, youth, and families. Maybe also, good morning.
Good morning. We're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2324 Children, or County Children and Youth Memorandum of Understanding Statewide Adoption and Permanency Network, Order Child Machine Matching Initiative between the County of Blair, Blair County Children and Families, and DiCon Adoption and Foster Care. This initiative is 100% grant-funded.
Questions, comments?
All right. Next, we're requesting approval of fiscal year 2324 Renewal Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children and Families, and Family Services Incorporated for the period of July 1, '23 through June 30, '24. All right. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that to Thursday's meeting as well. Thank you. And Department of Emergency Services, our Public Safety Director, Mark Taylor, is with us this morning. Good morning, Mark.
Requesting approval of the submission of Southern Alleghenies Co-op Number One Regional 2024 Maintenance Grant Agreement and Capital Project Request for the statewide interconnectivity funding to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, in the amount of $8,365,560.60, of which the County of Blair request is $259,292.70 for the maintenance projects, $2,304,417.56 for the capital projects. These are put in each year to try to keep up to date with our 911 operations. The big ask for, to state this year is for the regional radio project. That's the biggest project we've asked for. We've already done regional phone. This year, we did regional CAD. Regional radio would be the next step to kind of give us full redundancy, so we're hopefully could be awarded that.
Questions from Mark?
I have a question. I'm just, I know you apply for this every year, and I'm just glad that it does. It helps us keep up to date with our 911.
Okay. Thank your consideration.
Thank you. We'll take that to Thursday's. Thanks. Elections Department, Sarah Seymour. Morning, Sarah.
Good morning. I'm here requesting approval of an Election Integrity Grant Program Contract between the County of Blair and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Community and Economic Development, in the total amount of $406,631.91 for the period of August 15, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
We are grateful, even despite the strings attached for the election integrity grant, which has certainly helped us in an area that frankly would have really been the general fund significantly. Back in. Questions for Trina?
Okay. And also requesting approval of the school district election polling place agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of the Blair County Board of Elections and the Hollidaysburg Area School District for the 2023 municipal election and the 2024, 2025 primary and general elections, specifically for the junior high.
Sarah, this in general, and I'm asking the question I shouldn't ask, but I'm going to anyway, with all the legislative moves we're seeing in Harrisburg to move the date of the presidential primary for 2024 earlier. We had any, has there been any either contact, preliminary or otherwise, with the schools whom we rely on heavily for use of voting places?
Not yet. I was going to meet with the solicitor after this, because I had a couple meetings from my monthly meeting that we had last week.
Okay. So you were going to go ahead and do, I just was actually asking, had any of them reached out from you with all the newspaper reports?
They have not, no.
Okay.
And as of now, we don't have a date.
It creates a significant problem for the counties in more ways than one. No. No, it isn't. It truly isn't. You know, I mean, I understand why the legislators want us to be on a more relevant date, but it's a little problematic for counties in general, and it's, I mean, you're going to, is it unfair to say, Sarah, that if they would change that, that your, essentially your 2024 general election processing and finish up will essentially run into the getting, preparing for the 2024 primary?
Correct.
They will overlap.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
So that creates serious issues.
We'll have to argue for it. It would be huge.
So hopefully, the school calendars are set. I mean, I don't, so that's, they're...
You can't legislate less than a year before the election. And as a solicitor, where this keeps happening, it's very aggravating that the legislature doesn't put any more thought into the impact of changing laws on election matters. They get upset about all the litigation, which when you do this, this is why you have litigation. You want to do this, do it for 2028. Don't do it months, literally months, before the primary. To me, it's unconscionable. They did the same thing in 2020, months before you have to run a new election with changes in election law that were so substantial, it hasn't been changed in basically 60 years. The election happened between 1937 and there were minor changes at that point. So whether there are good changes or not, part of the issue is trying to implement change with the exception of no notice. And it creates a burden on Blair County and all of them.
We will take that nevertheless to Thursday's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Warren White soul joins us for the prison item under Item E.
Good morning. Good morning. We're requesting approval for the acceptance of the bids that were received for food and non-food items for the Blair County Prison for Review Award or Rejection according to county code thereafter.
Were you provided those bids by email? Okay. I wasn't sure, because they were open on Friday, and I was out of the office, so I wasn't sure if you were...
I can send them as soon as I get back to the office.
So accepting them is fine today, but we'll have to look at them, we'll get them to you, and then we'll award accordingly once we have had them distributed, so.
Would you prefer that we go ahead and accept them today?
Yes, because that's the way the ad was written, that they'd be accepted today, but then we'll take our time and award them as appropriate.
Control staff has provided them to me, and I can, I have the email, so I can provide them to you as soon as I get back to the office.
That'd be great. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept?
Yes. Christian Webster will make the motion to accept the bids.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. See you Thursday. Item F, Commissioners' Office.
I can take this one. We are requesting approval for the submission of the final report to the, I'm sorry, to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, or DCNR, for the peer-to-peer grant, which would verify all project expenditures have been made in accordance with the grant contract, and we're accepting the report for the purposes of closing out the grant. And there is no immediate need. We can take that to Thursday's agenda.
Any questions at this time for Nicole on that? Okay, then we'll move to Item G from Court Administration, and I'm not sure who Judge Keggers is.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're presenting for discussion or approval an agreement that the judiciary desires to enter into with a LLC entitled Speak and Scribe LLC for Court Reporting Services. You may all know, of course, that court reporters are a regular and integral part of the court's daily operations. During my career, I've heard many judges over the years say that despite how important we think we are, one of the most important things we do is make sure that there's an accurate record being created for all the proceedings before us, so that that record can be available for review if it needs to be reviewed. Right now, we have five budgeted court reporting positions. We used to have many more than that over the years, but now we were down to only three employees. So there's a real need for us to look elsewhere to contract for services until we are able to recruit and/or train new court reporters, which is something we obviously want to do, and we are in the process of trying to do that right now with one individual to fill one of those positions. But being from five to three is a real concern, how we're going to operate and what we're going to do if we have to maintain a level of three. I mean, it's either going to require us to incur significant overtime with the court reporters that we have, or perhaps cancel proceedings, which of course we don't want to do, and in many instances are not able to do with constitutional protections that a lot of individuals who come before us have. So I'm available to answer any questions. I know you won't be voting on the matter until Thursday, but anything.
When was the last time that we had four, five court reporters?
I would, I think that would have been last two years ago, Tricia left, about two years ago. And we went down, we went down to four for a certain period of time, and then, as you guys may know, you approved a contract with a different LLC principal court reporting to fill that gap, and we continue to use them. They're only available a day or two a week, usually two days on average, so they're not filling that gap for the fifth person, but they're keeping us afloat with many problems that we have right now, because we don't have that position filled. Going down to three with only one independent contractor would be a significant problem. The group, the entity that we're looking to contract with for the additional work is consistent with the fees being incurred by the principal court reporting. Actually, it's a little, a little better than that, so we would be saving some money with this LLC compared to the, to the court reporting service we're currently using. And quite frankly, all the other ones that we could contract with are significantly more, so we're kind of lucky we have the two independent contractor options we have. The other entities are substantially more.
And this new entity is in fact a new entity?
Yes.
And it is from the employee, the last court reporter who just retired?
Yes.
Who started that, back in July. Clarifying that. Questions, comments?
I'm sympathetic, as an attorney, I'm sympathetic to the court's situation. I know that it is important to, to have court reporters, court reporters or recorders, whatever they actually tend to be, but I do have concerns about this particular proposal. First of all, our labor council has advised us against this, and we rely on folks, professionals that, that have expertise in these areas to advise us. I'm not an employment attorney, so I'm not going to disagree with them. I don't have any basis to. But that, that concerned me, and I know that we've discussed that in the past, and you folks are all aware of my concern there. But I'm concerned that agreeing to this type of thing can bring us to a poor precedent that, that could in the future lead to thwarting the employer and employee relationship with other departments and other employees. I certainly don't want to create problems that could exist then down the road. But I do have a solution that I believe we had discussed. The former employee had proposed this particular idea in order to, she's retired, so she doesn't want to pay into retirement, which certainly makes sense. She doesn't need the benefits, so she doesn't want to get into all of that, which certainly makes sense. I understand where she's coming from, too. But, and she's looking for reduced hours, and I can understand that as well. But if she's looking for those things, it would seem to me that the simplest way to go about this is to simply have her be a part-time employee. It would meet all the requirements that she's requesting, and it wouldn't interfere with our employer-employee relationships with, with any of, anybody else in that office or anyone else in those similar positions. So those are my concerns and my thoughts on, on this.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Just in brief response, and I'm happy to carry on the conversation further after the meeting or at any point in the future, if you want to do that. On the issue of, on the issue of the labor council, I used to practice labor law. I've indicated a willingness to, to meet with your labor council, to have discussion with him, to understand what his concerns are against this proposal. I am, I'm constrained to be, in due respect to him, I'm not, I'm confused about what his, what his concern would be from a labor perspective. I don't see any labor issue here, and I'm not sure what his thinking is. I would love to hear it and be, have more information on what that is, perhaps, or something we can do to, to rectify that situation if he has a concern and something can be tweaked, or we can have a discussion along those lines. So I'm sympathetic, obviously, if you're getting that kind of advice. I just don't know where that's coming from. On the employer-employee relationships, if you're talking about, like, the court reporter, the court reporters themselves, I think you would find if you talk to them, they're anxiously hoping for approval of this, because they are constrained in their ability to meet the deadlines that we put on them to, to turn transcripts around and to run from, you know, try to be two places at once. I had a court reporter in my courtroom the other day. She was struggling to run from my courtroom to Judge Doyle's courtroom and try to be in two places at once to do proceedings. It's putting a lot of undue stress on them, that there's only three of them, and I think that one possible, you know, so fixed to that temporarily is to have them accrue a lot of overtime. But we got to be careful about that, too, with the market the way it is. I mean, some, some, you know, employees might simply not want to work, you know, the double hours that, that they could work, and so that's an issue, too, on the retention side, asking too much of, you know, of them as far as overtime concerns. So we've got to balance that. So I don't, I don't, I don't see how there would be any issues with our current court reporters in that situation. And I think that it's understa, if we were seeking to cancel out employee positions in favor of independent contractors, then I can see how that might create a concern, you know, going forward with, with our court reporters or other employees. But that's not what we're doing here. I mean, the fact that we went from our standard amount down, and we're not able right now to recruit or train people to fill the position is the reason why we sought the need for principal court reporting to begin with. So if there was a concern for, in this instance, I kind of wondered why that concern wasn't evident when we brought principal in to begin with. So I think that we're, there's a court reporter shortage, you know, around Commonwealth, and I think there, you know, needs, the judiciary, I think, needs to do something about that. I mean, we, it's, there's available, issues of available trainers and so on and so forth. But until, until we can get in a better position with that, you know, I think this is something that's a significant concern. So I'd be happy to meet with you to answer any detailed questions that you may have on that. I'm more than happy to speak with the labor council. I know we had a similar issue years ago, where there was a difference between the judiciary's opinion and the labor council's on a particular issue. We had a meeting. I thought it went well. We resolved the issue at that meeting. I would encourage us to do that again. If the reason for concern is, is the opinion you're getting from labor council, we would love to meet with them.
Thank you. I think that I could summarize his concern as a concern that the union will perceive it as union busting if we're replacing employees with independent contractors. And I think that based on my understanding of his concern, there are ways to mitigate that, and he actually specifically requested or suggested that it be run by UMWA, which that email is about two months ago, and I just don't know whether that has occurred or whether this would be timely to have that happen before we vote. If any further discussion has taken place.
I think the, the concern, too, is that the county needs to continue to demonstrate that we're actively trying to hire people to fill the actual employees' positions, which, as you know, we're training one employee to do, so I think that's shown that. But as, as you stated, it's been two years since we had all five positions, so I think that's where, you know, we don't hire for these positions. These are court positions, which are solely within your court's control to, to interview and hire for. So that's where I think some of the concern is coming from, is that we need to see progress on looking and searching and trying to fill the positions, regardless of whether we had these contracts in place.
So, you know, on that issue, I think that if we were, as I, as I mentioned earlier, if it, if we were creating an atmosphere where it looked like we were trying to move towards independent court, you know, independent contractors to do these positions, I think that that union issue would be well taken. But we have a situation here where we've consistently advertised for this position for ever since we were down one, and what usually happens is the workable, the job sites go out, you know, people who are looking for employment and administrative-type positions go through and check the boxes, and then we find that the people that are applying have no training, you know, or no experience in court reporting. They just thought it sounded, you know, neat, like a neat job or whatever. So we don't have, we haven't been getting qualified applicants in the positions, even though we've consistently advertised for them, and we've actually asked you guys to, I don't know what the term is, reboot the, you know, reboot the application to put it at the top of the list, you know, before, to try to, to encourage similar things. So, and, and when you look at the risk involved in a, in a union issue, my view, just my view only, is that that's, you know, you look at those issues, if we don't think there's an issue there, and we're just concerned about the union's position, then it becomes a, you know, it's kind of a benefit-risk evidence-based thing. What, what are we really doing that? Does the evidence support that we're doing that? And that's not the case here. And we haven't had any union grievance to this point with principal court reporting, even though they've been contracted with for well over a year, I believe, and there's, and there's been no union issue with them. So I think that there would be plenty of evidence there to contradict the, the union thing, and not to mention the fact that we have recruited one of our own employees to be trained to do this kind of work, which shows that we're, I literally, I literally go through the courthouse sometimes and tell the court reporters just go steal somebody from some other office, encourage them to be trained somewhere to do this job, and they'll make more than they're making in their current position, because this is a skill that is worthy of extra pay. And I think there's, you know, the problem with that is, you know, which employees do we have that can afford, you know, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 worth of training? When do they have time to be trained? Who's going to train them? You know, those are some of the pitfalls you run into when you, when you try to train people to do a specific skill like this, which is very unique and important. But I think that's the long-term solution that we're probably going to have to get to, but that's going to take some time.
I have a follow-up question to that.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
I'll stay all day.
I'm just curious. So you have received applicants over the last couple of years, and you mentioned that they are not qualified, because they probably don't have the training. Were none of them willing to go through the training? I would think that, that somebody out there would have been willing to... I would think that, that somebody out there would have been willing to, to do that in order to, to.
I think that what usually happens is that we get, you know, like I said before, we get people who are applying for multiple positions and, and just upon a telephone interview, we realize they're not, you know, they're not in that position to, they're, they're not trained, they don't have any experience. I, I'm not sure if we're telling them, hey, seek out training and reapply. I mean, we could certainly do that if that was a concern of the union or whoever. I mean, that would be like, that would be like having somebody apply for your mechanic position and it doesn't, that would be like me applying for your mechanic position and then you guys tell me, why don't you go get trained? I, I would, I would tell you in another life, maybe I could figure out how to, how to do that kind of work or, you know, have time to get trained. But, I mean, that, you know, that's the way I think you have to think of it. If you have somebody apply for one of your other positions, it's a professional skill and they're not trained, I mean, yeah, we can tell them to go get trained, you know, but the only thing we can do there is tell them to follow up and apply later when they're in that position. Whether or not we're actually telling them that, I don't, I don't know, but we certainly would be happy to do that in the future if that would help alleviate a concern it may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, one of the things here, and just talking about the recruiting, you know, I specifically think that there are other, there are other opportunities to do this other than the contract, frankly, that would be more cost-effective and essentially risk-free for the county. But in the court reporter, the last posting, which was ten months ago for that, requirements, and I think this is where maybe the, this is what the requirements for the job said, qualified applicants will hold a high school diploma or GED, two years relevant work experience with prior court experience preferred, reported, preferred. So in fact, that might, maybe that needs to be reworded if that really doesn't fit what you're looking for and that's what you seem to be saying. It's, am I putting words in your mouth?
Well, when I listen to you say that, I mean, it's, I guess it's, you know, when you say court experience, I mean, that, you know.
It's two years relevant experience. So that could be in a law office, I assume, or some other sort of, you know, job with the courts?
The rules of judi, there's, there's rules of judicial administration promulgated by the Supreme Court and those rules don't allow us to have anyone in a, in a position of being a court reporter who cannot meet certain standards of performance, you know, being able to take down words at a certain, at a certain speed, there's a certain rate, you know. So there's those, those skills that are inherent in being a court reporter are necessary to do the job.
Then they should be in the requirements and it doesn't say that, which may, again, be part of the, part of the issue.
I think we were updating that recently to lay out the specific standards that were required by the rules of judicial administration. And I think one of the reasons we were doing that is to try to avoid just applications for people that clearly weren't, weren't, weren't qualified. Commissioner, I'd be happy to sit down with you and, and hear you out on what those alternate solutions might be.
Well, actually, I'm going to know, you're going to hear them now.
Okay.
One, as a matter of fact. And, and this also comes to the recruiting. And, and it's on the compensation because if the position advertisement, the website indicates what the per page compensation is, but I think that's hard for people to see in comparable terms. How do you quantify that? And so, and I asked Judge Doyle that and she told me that court reporters can make $10,000 a year, a bit more from transcribing pages annually, but people can't tell that from, from, again, what's unworkable because it's, it simply gives the hourly wage in the 35 hours a week. I went ahead and pulled the W2s for the four court reporters last year and it was very interesting because one court reporter did make $21,766 in, in those fees and that was the lowest, the lowest. Then went as high as $34,692. And assuming the court would hire a new court reporter at the lowest wage and that's the 1630, 35 hours a week, it's like, it's $29,666 a year. But if you add even a portion of that, like say 80% of what the lowest person made here last year, and a little bit of additional time, you're going to be near $50,000, which I think you would have people in the county falling over themselves to apply for that position if they understood that, that there's no way they can tell that. And I think that's something, and I mentioned that, I'm going to mention that to HR, that I think they need to make that. So it's relevant so that people know that because it's going to be a much better marketing tool than what's there now.
I agree with that point and when we, when we redid the job, when we worked on it, maybe I'm not, I'll just speak to staff about the status of this. I think we, it's already been done, but there was revisions to the job application made recently that included the rules of judicial administration requirements on one end and showing that it's a little bit more difficult, but on the other end of the compensation, listing the approximate amounts of the additional compensation. I think one concern of putting, being too definitive about the extra pay is we wouldn't want any, create any perceived contract that we were promising to pay as somebody a certain amount.
And I think what you do is point to and say, in 2022, this is what happened. And it's not.
Right.
You're not making a promise, you're talking what happened in the past.
I agree with you on that. And I do think that that would help with recruitment. However, I would just ask you to understand though that getting somebody who's interested in that kind of pay and somebody who is able to do the position, there's, there's substantial steps in between those two parameters. So the question is, what do we do until we, until, if we can, if we can work with the county to get a training budget or something in, in the budget, then that might be an option. But we have different, the person who's being trained right now struggled to find somebody to train her. I mean, so there's a training need as well there. So until we can, until we can bridge that gap between working with you to get people trained, and this is the same thing that a lot of the, the counties are facing, that's why a lot of the counties have this need to go out to the LLCs because they, there's a training problem, there's a recruitment problem, you know, so it's across-the-board kind of problem and then we're competing with the other counties too. Our wages are less than theirs, so we're competing, competing with that. So I'm sympathetic to those concerns, but until we can get in a better position about that, then what, what do we do? So, I mean, I would.
I'm going to address something present, but let me just finish that because I think people need to know what the potential is here. You're looking, people are looking at, hey, what's my career potential here? And, and I think the potential is huge. We had one court reporter in 2022 who earned $74,782. I mean, that is more than almost anyone in the county made. That's the kind of the compensation that exists there. It's high. And even I think the, the average earnings for the, for the four was almost $66,000. So it's, for county wages, it's extremely high and the potential there, again, is something to market you. You're not saying that this is what the potential exists, that I'm looking for career opportunities. Here is a career opportunity that would be worth my training, my taking the time because I can make some real money.
So I, I agree with that and that's all part of what you're putting forth with recruitment, which we, you and I are on the same page with that. So, I mean, again, it's still that question of getting people to that position. And on the flip side though too, I would suggest, I'm not sure and I, I don't, I don't think we'd want to get too far into this argument because of what the union issue. But I, I think there's, whether or not we derive a financial benefit by not using the LLC, you know, I mean, as you, as you know, you get into a lot of costs with the employees that you wouldn't have with the, with the LLC, you know, various insurance and so on and so forth that we, that we benefit from by using an outside contractor. So, I mean, I would suggest that if you have that concern, I mean, if you have a concern about using an independent contractor for whatever reason, because of you think of the financial reason or whatever that reason may be, which I, again, I'd be happy to discuss with you, I would just suggest that if you guys allow us to use the LLCs for a certain length of time and say, hey, we're only going to do this for a certain length of, you know, we're only going to approve these LLCs for the next year or, or something like that so we can work towards a broader solution. And if you're willing to, to discuss with us money for training, you know, money for, you know, a court reporter trainee position, you know, or things of that nature, then, then I'm sure we would have an amicable resolution to that. But we got to do something to get us from point A to point B and if we don't do that.
I'm, I'm coming to that as well. So, and I think Commissioner Webster's solution still was one that was viable. I'm, well, we just.
And on that issue, I mean, you know, I can ask somebody to be an employee all, all I want, but if that person says, hey, I don't, I don't, I don't want to pay into the pension anymore, I don't want to risk having to pay into health insurance that I don't need, I'm, I'm contracting with other businesses, I don't want you guys to tell me when I'm working, I'm going to tell you when I'm working. I mean, all those benefits are part of being that business owner and if, if this individ, this individual has taught us, my understanding is, they've suggested, and maybe there needs to be more conversation, make sure they understand what this would mean. But if, if these, if the potential independent contractors are a no to being an employee, well then that, you know, that's, that's their decision. We still, we still have a problem.
Agreed. We didn't know whether that, we have no way of knowing, obviously, that was.
It's my understanding.
Whether that was discussed with, and certainly that was.
My understanding, and I had not, I have not been privy to those conversations, but I've been informed by the president judge and the staff that those conversations had occurred and that there was not interest in that.
Well, the, the last thing, it's, you know, we, I, I think the other thing that, that we're not using, and you alluded to earl, a little bit earlier, but I pulled the time cards for the last four weeks, for which they'd been submitted for the three current court reporters. And they, and again, $35 a week, so when you talk about overtime, they have to work over 40 to get overtime. So just an additional time in an average week, that gives you 15 hours of additional time, it's straight pay, that's from hours 35 to 40. And so during that time, when there could have been 60 hours used, there's only 31 used, so about half of them were used. And in terms of overtime during that four-week period, I think there was like seven and a half hours, that's it. You know, I think this is a case in any other county department, we'd have a problem like this and gosh knows, we've had enough of them over recent years. That's what we ask is, hey, work that additional time, work that overtime. And particularly the additional time, I mean, you're making up almost half a court reporter just if you use your full additional time.
So I think that the reasoning why you haven't seen that is there's a couple of reasons why you haven't seen it. First of all, I mean, I, I think our court, I mean, I'm not trying to defend a lot of our employees, but our court reporters in particular have been with us for a pretty long time. They're some of our most loyal employ, I mean, I've been, I've been in the law business in this courthouse as a licensed attorney for 25 years and a couple more years running around as a student before that. And I think that the three court reporters that we have working for us right now have been around, I know one of them has been around the whole time that I, that I've been here and I think the other ones have, have probably either were around when I started or shortly thereafter. So we've had some long-term employees there. I think that, you know, they're, they're, they, they do work extra hours doing their work, oftentimes remotely, but, but they haven't been, you know, billing us for the overtime. And I think that's in part just because they didn't, there may be been some, I don't want to speak here on this issue, it's not my position to speak on those relationships, I'm not the president judge, but there was a little bit of maybe uncertainty on what they were allowed to, to claim, what they weren't, weren't allowed to claim. So I, I don't think that, you know, if you're, if you're looking at the numbers and suggesting that they're not working the extra hours, I, I think there's reasons why that is the case that are to, in order to our benefit on that.
You can't quantify that unfortunately and we do have, this is quantitative, I think this is again, a management decision, but I would absolutely encourage with the strongest of words that management take that and use that additional time and overtime. If you're in a crisis now, these employees are loyal and I realize they are, and long-term employees who want the system to work, we again, have not even had cases like that where we've had people, we mandated overtime because it was a, a crisis. And if you reach that critical point, then I think that's, that's the tool that you don't use and only though you use this, this additional time particularly. Either way, because you already have the benefits you're paying built in, it is exceptionally more cost-effective than doing a professional contract.
Well, let me say this. So I mean, the, as I just discussed, there are reasons why you're not seeing that, that overtime being, playing out in the statistics and that with the little direction from us, I'm sure can change. But there's something else you have to think about there. Overtime is one thing when you're talking about production of transcripts, you know, doing the, the aspect of a court reporter outside of the normal business day. But that overtime doesn't help us when you're talking about in-court proceedings when the judges are presiding at the same time. I mean, one person can't be in two places at once. So there's a critical part of the court reporting job that involves being in the courtroom and, I mean, that's the most important part really, being in the courtroom in the presence of the judge. And if we, if we, if we have, we have four judges now and a occasional senior judge, we're about to be back to five and we're going to have three court reporters. So we get in that position, we're not going to be able to operate court, in court without the court reporters on many instances. So even if they don't.
Can't you schedule that around so that you can schedule things efficiently so that you don't have to have that many.
If, if we were.
Proceedings at the same time?
If we were not busy enough to, to have two of us not be in the court at the same time, maybe, but that, that's not, if you ask around to the attorneys right now, because we're trying to get ahead of our, our docket about how busy we are in the courtroom and you'll hear the griping about how often everyone's in court because that's, we're keeping the pace going fast and we're getting the proceedings going. So it's not uncommon for four of us to be in court at the same time or on the same day and, and when we get to five of us, I'm quite certain that, that we're going to be in that position to have four, five courtrooms going at the same time. If we don't do that, then we're simply going to have other problems. There's going to be other problems and, I mean, you're going to have criminal cases that are going to get furthered away, there's going to be more people in prison, there's going to be, you know, I mean, the, if we don't keep the pace going at the pace that I personally think we should keep it going, which is where we're at right now and maybe even stepping it up when we get to the judges, then we're going to have other effects that are going to be detrimental, some of which will be financial.
Well, you all just disagree on whether, how much management can have an effect on that, but I think there can be better management, more coordination, the courts can be managed more effectively, frankly.
I'm not disagreeing with you that there's.
You yourself have told me that.
That the overtime issue is important and the management issue is important. But with this particular position though, I just ask you to think about the operation of the courtrooms and the number of judges. That's an area where the, the management can be helpful, but you can't split somebody in half, you know, and put them in two different courtrooms.
Lastly, I would think back to the overtime, additional time issue, if there, if people are reporting, that becomes an HR issue, I would strongly encourage, again, court administration to meet with HR to discuss that as soon as possible if people are working time and not reporting that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We have one matter of old business and that's from the sheriff's office. And Sheriff Lot was here, but, which means Chief Tatter, are you taking that?
I, I know a little bit more today than I did last week.
Okay.
We're requesting to pay two invoices for Grand Total $636 to Betwee Systems. The services were, came about before we had a contract with them, you know, they were both emergency situations where we had to have our monitors fixed or replaced. So we had to do it that day at that time to do that, so that's what we're asking you to do.
Any questions for Chief Tatter? Okay. Want to look at you, Commissioner Webster? Do you want to say?
I will then make a motion that we approve the two outstanding invoices for Betwee Systems for emergency work that needed to be done prior to the entry into a contract with Betwee.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? So in favor of the motion, please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We've reached the end of our agenda. We're going to adjourn at this time and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.